Good afternoon. I'd like to call this special meeting committee of the whole public session to order. I'm going to invite trustee Leclair to give us the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We acknowledge that we are on land and surrounded by water, originally inhabited by indigenous peoples who have traveled this area since time immemorial. This territory is within the lands honored by the Wapoam treaties, agreements between the Anan'thabe, Honoshoni, Lanay, Lanape, and allied nations to peacefully share and care for the resources around the Great Lakes. Specifically, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of the Huron-Wendat peoples and the Three Fires Confederacy, the Ojibwe, the Ottawa, Potawatomi. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture while remaining committed to moving forward respectfully with all First Nations, Inuit, and Métis.
Thank you very much. With regard to attendance, trustee Cook is absent due to a conflict with the work conference, and I need a motion to accept that. Trustee Nelson, trustee Buckler, anyone on that motion? Okay, all those in support. Let's carry. Thank you. Do we have any... No approval of the agenda. I was reading ahead of myself. We do have an addendum. Delegations come in after the agenda goes out, so we have to add them as addendums. So, a motion to approve the agenda with the addendum. Trustee Buckler, trustee McCowee, all those in support. That's Carrie. Thank you. Trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe I have requested if we could add, just to declare a motion to convene into committee of the whole closed section, that I will be adding a legal matter.
Sorry, is this something that's an emergency? Are bylaws require that?
So, we're on, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong agenda. Of course, we're on the special meeting, so I forget what I said. I will add it at 6 o'clock. And I did send an email to that effect for the other meeting.
Yes, email came this afternoon, but we no longer accept addendums under our new bylaws. It has to be an emergency item after the agenda's been sent out, but that's not for this meeting.
Okay, I'll talk to it on that meeting, and I will submit it, and I will say that we're not meeting again, and we're not having special meetings, and it's a legal matter, and that when we go into private session, I'm giving public notice that I would like to speak to something at the private meeting.
Okay, we can talk about it later. It's not for this meeting. Thank you. Okay. Any declarations of conflict of interest for this meeting? Seeing none. We have one delegation. Mario Spagnolo wishes to speak to us about the budget. Mario, you have five minutes.
Just making sure the technology works. Thank you. I'm providing feedback on behalf of the 1,500 members of the Elementary Teachers Federation in Greater Essex. It's authentic feedback from frontline education workers that work in our elementary schools. The purpose is to understand the impact that budget decisions are having on our classrooms and the realities that workers are facing and students are facing, and it's to help inform decision-making to support student learning and well-being. The key themes that emerged from the consultation that we had with our members is reducing staff impacts student success, fewer resources hinder teaching and learning, increased workload and stress on educators costs the board financially and impacts classrooms. Vulnerable students are most affected by the cuts that are being proposed, and requests for more frontline support was evident. I took a snapshot of teacher voice by just taking direct quotes from the consultation, and I'll read them. An increase in support staff to assist with managing behaviors in the classroom with recent special education cuts. It becomes increasingly challenging to pull students from small group or one-on-one instruction when other students in the classroom struggle with self-regulation and working independently. I'm noticing cuts hurting my students by not having coverage for student support worker breaks. Students are not able to learn because my student with needs require all of my attention. Students need, don't have switches that go off because the EA is no longer in the room. These cuts hurt everyone. Fewer support staff in schools, student-on-student aggression, workplace violence, program collapse because of evacuations. Students requiring one-to-one but not having the support, the staff to support them. Overall, special education programs are being disrespected because of the cuts. Next, it is difficult to cover the curriculum. Music budget cuts means not enough instruments. Students having to share basics leads to boredom and behavioral issues. At times, there are no pencils, no crayons, or pencil crayons. What a difference from when I first started teaching when we had full stock rooms with construction paper. Budget cuts have hurt the arts, and the arts are so essential to student mindset, mood, personal fulfillment, and mental health. Just sad. If you're going to remove a specialized program that helps children read, write, and learn mathematics, then you need to make sure there's enough support staff in the school to support those kids. And then, this comment is, "I find that with all the new kindergarten students starting school with tremendous needs, but so few support staff to assist them. Therefore, students are on modified days. Those students deserve to be at school all day and supplied enough staff to take care of their needs." "My students in the RISE program have been left behind to fend for themselves with virtually no meaningful support in the regular classroom. Our trustees have the future of education in their hands. Instead of opposing the cuts, they are doing the government's dirty work for them. The word 'trust' is literally in the title of their job, and it has been broken. We require support for our students with special needs and severe mental health needs. Students are coming in with more complex needs, and the constant evacuations of our classrooms should not be happening. Students have a right to a violent, free learning environment." Books, specifically core resources. It's great to have online resources such as Mathology, but students need actual textbooks, spellers, readers, grammar books, novels, kits. Classrooms do not have the quantity of technology needed to engage fully with all the online learning. And even if there were the resources, children are overwhelmed with overstimulate, and overstimulated by technology use, and still need print resources. And the last comment, "The elimination of RISE is a travesty." We surveyed our members on violence, and the data is in front of you. Since March 2020, 72.4% of our Greater Essex elementary teachers responded that there's an increase, violence has increased a great deal or somewhat. 80% are saying violence has increased since they first started teaching. 66% say that violence is worse now than before, and only 1% of our membership believes violence has actually improved. Data on the RISE program. When we surveyed our teachers with the question, "Do you think RISE is an important program for the board to invest in?", 98% responded yes. When we asked them, "Do you feel that the students in RISE benefit from the program?", almost 99% of the teachers responded yes. So, that leads to recommendations with 20 seconds to go. Trustees should reject the proposed budget, not as rejection of senior administration, but as a rejection of the provincial government cuts. Reverse the cuts to special education and save the RISE program. Engage with stakeholders through true consultation, school by school, and sign on to a common media release with stakeholders, which I spoke to earlier in the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for clarification from trustees? Trustee Burgess?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Through clarification from the speaker on the word evacuations, I didn't understand that in context.
So, it's common, I would say, in a lot of our schools across the province, actually, that classrooms are evacuated when a student shows aggression or starts throwing things. Their behavior is out of control, where the safety of other students is at risk or staff. And many times, in their behavior and safety plans, the plan is for the other kids to be taken out of the classroom, and the kid to be isolated in the classroom on their own with the support staff and whatever team is on the behavior and safety plan. A lot of times, they're not called evacuation to kids to protect them, because it's a scary thing. So, they might say, "We're going for a library walk," or "We're going outside," or "We're going to go visit somebody," but technically, what's happening is there's an evacuation because of violence.
Any other, sorry, any other questions for clarification? I have a couple of questions. So, if I go right to the beginning, the purpose of budget consultation, so I just want to be clear that your budget consultation with your members all took place in isolation from the public consultations that we were doing as a board? So, you didn't encourage your members to participate in the board's consultations that were open to the public?
You're asking if we encouraged? Yes, we did.
So, because what I'm curious about is that your presentation comes once the budget has already been prepared, as opposed to during the pre-budget consultations where there was an opportunity to put input, which may have impacted decisions?
I think staff did.
So, so the quotes that you included from staff, were they included in the public survey?
I wouldn't know. I don't have access, I don't think, to the public survey.
So, your members didn't share with you that information, that they participated, and either they're...
I'm not following your question or logic.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand if your members participated in the public consultation that helped us prepare the budget.
I would leave that to senior to admit to give you the data on it's staff. I think they have that data, because when you go into the survey, you have to say if you're a parent, staff, etc., so that's not appropriate for me to answer.
Okay. All right. I just thought it would have been helpful, pre-budget, as opposed to after it's been prepared. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the trustees? Okay. Thank you very much. Before we start with item G, I just wanted to make a few comments, because this is a new process for us this year. In the past, we would have had a special budget meeting through the finance committee, but under our new governance bylaws, that's changed over. So, now it's a special committee of the whole meeting. And the purpose of this meeting is for administration to present the proposed 2025-26 budget and allow trustees an opportunity for more detailed discussion. So, the proposed budget has already been reviewed by the Finance and Facility Services Committee, and that committee has recommended approval of the budget. This recommendation will be coming forward tonight on the agenda of the regular public board meeting agenda. So, there's no motion coming out of this. It's just a report. And I wanted to point out that this committee of the whole meeting is the fourth opportunity in our budget process for public input on the proposed budget. The first opportunity was from February 10th to the 28th. That was a public budget survey, and it was made available for public input, and you have information on that in section six of the budget binder. There were also two scheduled pre-budget public consultation meetings, April 8th and May 13th. pre-budget public consultation meetings, April eighth and May thirteenth. And I believe there were nobody attended from the public, those, either of those consultation meetings. And then today is the, the fourth time, although this is the one time that it's after the budget has been put together. The, the other opportunities was before the budget was created. And today, we're looking at the proposed budget. So in addition, there were also a number of consultations with board statutory and advisory committees and other groups that are involved in our decision-making. That's also included in section six of the binder. And if, if you didn't realize this, there was a little note in the binder that that we do post on the board's YouTube, a presentation about the budget, about the budget process and how funding happens and, and all of that. And that link to that YouTube video was posted with the public survey so that people could get a better understanding of the whole budget process. If you look that up in section six, you'll find that the number of viewers was very low, which is unfortunate, but I appreciate the time that administration took to prepare that video. It's twenty minutes long, and it's quite informative on the budget process. So thank you for that, and thank you for all the work to the team who helped put the budget together. And with that, I invite Superintendent Armstrong to present us with the proposed budget. Thank you.
I am pleased to present the draft 2526 budget to the Committee of the Whole this afternoon at its special meeting. First, before I begin, I would like to thank Mr. Mayhew for his assistance and for his outstanding work during what was very, very compressed timelines. And I would also like to thank Ms. Malash, who's not here with us right now, for quickly putting together all of the budget packages. I'd also like to thank the senior team, who have been very supportive during the budget development process. And it's really great to work with a team that understands the importance of fiscal responsibility and is truly engaged and interested in understanding how the education formulas work. Sounds great. I'm going to turn them all into mini accountants. So this afternoon, I want to briefly take you through the budget process and timelines, the education funding overview, planning assumptions, budget risks and opportunities, the draft operating budget, and the capital budget. So first, we'll take a look at the budget process and timelines. As we waited for the release of the education funding, a lot of budget consultation and upfront work was undertaken, as you can see on this slide. On May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, core education funding was released by the Ministry of Education. Following the special meeting of the Committee of the Whole today, the draft budget will be presented for recommendation for approval at the Board of Trustees' public meeting this evening. And the budget in its EFS submission format will be sent to the ministry by June thirtieth, assuming budget is approved. Briefly now, we'll just take a look at the education funding and provide an overview for you. So the education funding formula is represented by three pillars, as you will see on this slide. Core education funding is made up of six funds and twenty-eight allocations. Core education funding provides permanent, ongoing, operating funding to school boards to fund and maintain schools. Responsive education programs have seven themes, as you'll see noted in the middle, the middle box of the slide. This funding provides targeted, temporary, and time-limited supplemental funding to school boards based on government priority themes. Capital funding, or building, expanding, and renewing schools, consists of six funds. BURs, as we like to refer to it, provides funding for the construction, purchase, additions, renovations of schools, the maintenance and improvement and condition of schools, as well as debt servicing costs. Province-wide, core education funding is projected to be thirty-point-three billion dollars for twenty-five, twenty-six, with classroom staffing funding representing fifty-five percent of the total funding. Core education funding has increased three-point-three percent over the prior year, but this is mainly due to adjustments for salary and benefit benchmarks due to collective agreements and Bill 124 arbitrated settlements. The education funding formula introduces a few new changes for twenty-five, twenty-six, as you'll see on this slide. Labor-related changes include updates to salary benchmarks for ratified collective agreements and remedies that were payable under Bill 124. Student transportation funding has been updated to provide funding for the non-refundable portion of harmonized sales tax, HST, and a top-up so that all school boards receive an increase in funding of two-point-five percent. The complex supports allocation, which is within the Special Education Fund, has been updated to include two new funding components, replacing the education and community partnerships program component. The non-staff portion of benchmarks has been increased by two percent to assist school boards in managing increases in commodity prices, including electricity, insurance, and other costs. The implementation of the 2021 Statistics Canada Census data is in year two of a five-year phase-in period. The updated census data impacts the allocations for remote and rural learning, diversity in English language learners, demographic needs, save and accepting schools, and special education. The time-limited recent immigrant supplement has been discontinued for twenty-five, twenty-six as recent immigration enrollment has returned to pre-pandemic levels provincially. Finally, transparency measures have been introduced for the school board administration expense limit, which include, if you're in your first year of non-compliance within that limit, boards must submit and post a compliance management plan on the board's website along with regular progress updates. In the second year, consecutive year of non-compliance, boards are required to hire a third-party organization to review their administrative expenses, and this is at the cost and then he, and the expense of the school board. In the third consecutive year of non-compliance, the ministry will then become involved, and they may make specific adjustments to administrative expenses as they deem appropriate. Now we'll move forward to the planning assumptions that guided the, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. As you'll see on this slide, the budget is predicated on six planning assumptions. The first one being adherence to the Education Act. The second one is in alliance, alignment with the board's mission, vision, and strategic priorities. The third is ensuring adherence to all collective agreements and contractual obligations. The fourth one is compliance with all Ministry of Education requirements, including the board's multi-year financial recovery plan. The fifth one is to utilize conservative, conservative enrollment projections in the development of the budget. And the last one is a thoughtful use of resources in an equitable manner to meet the needs of students. Because the budget is predicated or is prepared in advance and is based on assumptions and estimates, there are risks that actual results may vary from the original budget. The key budget risks will be individually discussed in the next couple of slides. Enrollment projections, enrollment is a very prominent and very important risk to the budget. Enrollment projections are completed in the spring. They're based on known registrations at the time of the budget preparation. So it's very conservative. Any late or delayed registrations are not captured in these enrollment projections. Changes in enrollment may result in increases or decreases in core education funding, including its impact on the declining enrollment allocation. And to the extent that there are changes in our enrollment that will get captured when the board submits its revised estimates to the Ministry of Education in December of twenty twenty-five. Supply costs and absences are also another risk to this budget. Core education funding is insufficient to cover projected costs related to supply and absences. The board continues to experience high levels of staff absenteeism and supply costs. And sick and, sick and short-term leave programs are centrally negotiated by the province, leaving little, little control to school boards. Special education is another risk for the board's budget. We all know that special education is underfunded, and it's, and also based on how the board chooses to deliver its programs. We see it, a number of students that requires special education resources continues to grow. We have students on waiting lists. We have gains and steps program models that are not funded by the core education formula as it is written. Student needs are becoming far more complex. And there's been very modest increases in the twenty-five, twenty-six funding, and they primarily relate to changes or increases in salary benchmarks. So we see constantly, year after year, that there's chronic and significant underfunding based on the, on special education and on the program models that we offer at our board. So as a result, it is necessary for the board to reallocate unenveloped core ed funding to support the changing and the greater needs of our students. Statutory benefits, this one I struggle with. The board is required to remit Canada Pension Plan and EI deductions to the, to the federal government. It's prescribed, it's required by law. The employer portion that the board remits, we actually do not get enough funding from the province for the value of those payroll remittances that we need to make. And so that obviously creates a pressure for the board. With the impact of US tariffs and upward pressures on inflation, the purchasing power of the board's ministry funding continues to decline. Prices continue to be volatile. Vendors and service providers are not willing to hold pricing for any extended length of time. While core ed funding has been increased by two percent to account for inflation, it is insufficient based on the results of recent competitive procurements and the procurement restrictions policy. As a result, administration is prioritizing and monitoring its purchasing activities carefully to account for the implicit funding reduction. Aging infrastructure is also another risk for the board's budget because quite simply, we can't always anticipate when something needs to be repaired. So unanticipated events may occur. We get absolutely no ministry funding to do any repairs or maintenance of administrative buildings, which includes the building that you are in today, as well as the facility services building. To the extent that anything requires repair in either of those two facilities, the board has to access its accumulated surplus. This slide outlines the deferred maintenance across the board's facilities by year as determined by the ministry. The ministry hires third-party consultants to review school buildings for infrastructure requirements on a ten-year cycle. The ministry commenced a new tenure cycle in twenty twenty-four, and several of the board's facilities were examined this year. As you'll see from this slide, year one is defined as an urgent priority, and we have a total of nineteen-point-five million dollars of expense or repairs that are required. Year two is considered high priority, and that aggregates to one-hundred-and-twenty-four million. Year three is defined by the ministry as a medium priority, and that is sixty-three million dollars. Anything from years four and downward is considered not time-critical, and it's a low priority. We have three-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars of deferred maintenance for an overall total of five-hundred-and-thirty-eight-point-six million dollars of potential repairs and maintenance that need to occur. It is important also to note that the ministry has instructed school boards to prioritize spending from their school condition improvement and school renewal allocation to address facility condition, ventilation, accessibility, health and safety, and general code requirements. And just to give you a little bit more complex, complex, or some more context, this is the urgent priorities that the nineteen-point-five million dollars on the previous slide refers to. So you'll see the types of expenses that are facing the board that are extremely time-sensitive. We've had this risk for several years related to student transportation. Core education simply is insufficient to cover the projected costs. We have rising bus operating costs. In the, the most recent contract, the operators are receiving a six-point-eight-seven percent increase to base and variable rates. And the capital costs for procuring new school buses is very high. And again, ministry funding doesn't contemplate the renewal needs of, of, of school buses. And while we're fortunate, we have not actually canceled a bus run with our board, driver retention and shortages still is really critical. There are days when it comes really close, and it is very challenging at times to, to make sure those bus routes are running. Claims, settlements, and other events is a risk that frightens me. The board has continuous exposure to claims, grievances, and legal settlements. There are some claims that are not subject to a limitation period, and some settlements which are not covered by insurance, which would then require the board to use its accumulated surplus. Potential claims, grievances, and legal settlements are not included in the preliminary budget because they're unpredictable, and the board and administration has no ability to estimate the potential liability associated with them. We also must remain cognizant of the requirement to maintain an accumulated surplus, which excludes anything that we've already committed, of at least two percent of the board's operating allocation as per the ministry's requirements in approving the board's multi-year financial recovery plan. Now I'll just take you through a few highlights of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget's a little complex to read. You have to pull the threads to get at the story. We have, if you look at the budget year over year, you're going to see that the board is getting an increase in government grants and in, in education funding, which in itself sounds great. However, what you don't necessarily see through that is that we actually are, we have declining enrollment, and not a little. But there's a significant amount of declining student enrollment. However, salary and benchmark increases that are reflected in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget contribute to that increase in the government funding that we are seeing, and it kind of masks the declining student enrollment. We also have a multi-year financial recovery plan that's applicable for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, so that the board can get to a balanced budget for twenty-six, twenty-seven. So any cost-saving measures that were reflected in that multi-year financial recovery plan that was approved by trustees are reflected in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And this budget, if you've already peeked ahead, is a deficit budget. And even though it is less than one percent of the board's operating allocation, we still require the Minister of Education's approval to have the deficit budget. So this gives you a quick little snapshot of what the twenty-five, twenty-six budget presented to you looks like. As I mentioned, while we have an increase in operating revenues that's being projected, we are having, showing a preliminary deficit for twenty-five, twenty-six of nine-hundred-and-eight-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. This draft budget reflects the implementation of the cost-reduction measures that were identified in the multi-year financial recovery plan that was approved back in November of twenty twenty-four, along with further cost-saving measures recommended by administration. And this is detailed for you on page twenty-five in your budget package. It's also important to note that this draft budget is relying on four- that this draft budget is relying on four million dollars of one-time revenue from the declining enrollment grant, which highlights the continuing need to examine all of our cost structures. The preliminary budget does not meet the ministry's compliance requirements. While the board administration and the facilities and transportation expense limits are compliant, and the in-year deficit is less than one percent of the board's operating allocation, because the board is in a multi-year financial recovery plan, and it has had three consecutive years of deficits, the Minister of Education approval is required for the twenty five twenty six projected deficit of the nine hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. It is should be noted, though, we do not need to file an in-year deficit elimination plan because we have a multi-year financial recovery plan that's in place. In terms of the risk profile of the board, it will likely remain unchanged, but it's unclear if the ministry will require further monitoring or if further compliance measures will be implemented. We'll just have to wait and see. This slide provides for you a summary of the projected accumulated surplus. As I've mentioned, effective with the twenty six twenty seven budget, the board is expected to maintain an accumulated surplus balance of at least two percent of its operating allocation, which is approximately nine point eight million dollars if we use the twenty five twenty six operating allocation as a basis to draw the initial comparison. And this is excluding committed amounts. So the capital items that you see on that second line, we can't rely on that. We're looking at the operating line. So we have to maintain at least right now, close to ten million dollars of that. When examining the funding allocations and related expenses, there are several areas where the board experiences funding deficits because the funding allocation is inadequate to support the current expense structure of the board. There are five primary areas where funding deficits arise, as you can see on this slide, and they total twenty eight point one million dollars. These funding gaps must be managed through unenveloped core education funding. This requires that trustees and senior administration identify the key priorities of the board to inform budget decisions. A substantial amount of the board's revenue is based on student enrollment. Therefore, administration is conservative when projecting enrollment, utilizing known registrations at the time of budget preparation and students known to be returning. Elementary enrollment is projected to decrease by five hundred and twenty one average daily enrollment students over the twenty four twenty five budget, and that's across all grade levels. The decrease in enrollment has led to the board receiving the declining enrollment grant for twenty five twenty six, which is time limited, and it's really bridge bridge funding to provide the board with time to adjust its cost structures to the lower enrollment levels. It's also important to note that the ministry has cautioned all school boards to be conservative on their enrollment projections, and particularly for students in JK and SK due to print due to trends that are being seen provincially. From a secondary panel perspective, enrollment is projected to decrease in twenty five twenty six by four hundred and sixty three point five average daily enrollment students compared to twenty four twenty five's original budget. This is a very exciting slide, but it tells a story. Um, obviously, it shows that over the past four years that we have really been stagnant as a board from an enrollment perspective, and actually you're starting now to see the lines dip, which is showing that declining enrollment trends are emerging. So what can we do and how can we manage within our funding? So the administration has made all efforts to reduce non-salary expenditures to maintain student programming and keep the board's funding closely tied to the students. Unfunded programs were also carefully considered in developing the draft twenty five twenty six budget. So you will see there has been a reduction of seven point oh full-time equivalent MBE positions, a reduction of twenty point five full-time equivalent central office positions, a reduction in non-salary budgets, the elimination of the IB primary years program, the elimination of the IB program at Leamington District Secondary School, the phase out of the IB program at Riverside Secondary School, and we have eliminated French immersion at Marlborough and Forest Glade Public Schools, and we have offered those students um French immersion at another school in order to maximize our class size requirements. Additional measures that are reflected, cost reduction measures in this budget include boundary adjustments that we've made for our English as a second language learners. We have consolidated the Forest Glade Primary Learning Center. It those students are moving over to the former Eastwood uh public school with the other Forest Glade students while we do some work at Forest Glade. We have made reductions of two point oh social work positions, a reduction of five point oh full-time equivalent psychologists, speech language pathologists, and CDA positions. We have uh implemented restructuring supports for students that are in the RISE program. We are restructuring supports for part-time school aides. And there is the elimination of the Joint Employee Assistance Program, and we will be consolidating all that under one plan provider. The twenty five twenty six budget focuses on key four priorities. Indigenous education, student mental health and well-being, literacy and numeracy, and justice, inclusion, equity, and diversity. And details on how that budget how the budget supports these investments and these priorities is described on page nineteen in your budget package. This slide provides a summary of the twenty five twenty six revenues with a comparison to the original budget. Core education funding is projected to increase by forty point five million dollars despite declining enrollment. The increase can be primarily attributed to salary and benefit benchmark increases in the core education funding due to Bill one twenty four settlement and collective agreement increases. REP responsive education programs, that is increased primarily due to the timing of announcing funding allocations. There were two allocations that were announced earlier than in the prior year, that being the graduation coach for black students and the transportation and stability supports for children and youth in care. So we typically would only budget when the funding is announced. So it's just a timing issue. The decrease in other revenues is primarily primarily due to provisions for Bill one twenty four remedies, which were recognized in the twenty four twenty five year as other revenue. For twenty five twenty six, all salary benchmarks have been updated and are reflected in their respective categories. This slide provides a summary of expenses. Salaries and benefits are the largest expense for the board, and they represent approximately eighty percent of the board's overall expenses. The increases in instructional and administration are largely due to increased benchmarks for salaries and benefits, again, due to the arbitrated settlement of Bill one twenty four and collective agreements. All groups, except for the director and supervisory officers, have been impacted by these changes. Student transportation reflects the impacts of the twenty five twenty six bus operator contract rate increases, but it's offset by lower student enrollment and the impacts that that has now had on bus routing, and as well any efficiencies that we've been able to achieve in routing. Pupil accommodation expenses are projected to decrease by one point nine million, primarily due to staffing reductions, elimination of the carbon tax on natural gas, and other non-salary reductions. And then the infamous other category. Those expenses have decreased by twenty seven million due to the provisions that we talked about that were in place for Bill one twenty four and collective agreement increases. And again, those increases in twenty five twenty six are actually reflected in the individual salary lines um within the budget. I will wrap up this presentation with a high level review of the preliminary twenty five twenty six capital budget. This is a summary of the BURs, as we like to call building, expanding, and renewing schools. Uh, this is the funding that's available to the board for twenty five twenty six, including any carryover funding from prior years to use into the twenty five twenty six school year. It should be noted that the board will be receiving one point five million dollars less in school condition improvement funding than in the prior year. And as I mentioned before, the ministry is the ministry's been very clear on how boards are supposed to be prioritizing this funding in terms of its use, that being facility condition, ventilation, accessibility, health and safety, and general code requirements. And with that, I'm happy to take questions, and you can just focus on my sweet little Sophie.
Thank you for the presentation Superintendent Armstrong, and I appreciate that you've had to do that twice in just a few short days. Um, it was presented first to the uh Finance and Facility Services Committee, and there were uh there was an opportunity there for the committee members to ask questions. And then I appreciate that uh other trustees were able to send written questions in to have answered for this meeting. Um, and thank you to Sean and anyone else who helped you um with that task because that took quite a bit of of time as well. And um, just one comment I would make make from um from the first time I saw this, but I learned even more the second time too, so that that was good. Um, but that a number of things this year are still in there, but maybe reallocated. There was a there was a a bit of that in in the budget this year. Yeah, and so you really had to dig into the details in the binder to see that that's what happened. So with that, I'll um open the meeting for questions and um maybe we could just go around the room. That would be best, I think. So we start with um Trustee Armstrong. If you have questions on the budget proposal.
I just one of great concern. I certainly understand what um Mr. Spagnola was talking about, but I don't know what the options can possibly be if it's not what the team has put together. I just it it seems like it's not a win in any way, shape, or form. So my just is there anything else we can do? But I don't think so. So just a statement of concern. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment, and and I'm pretty confident that our administration and our staff have have committed themselves to the nth degree to do research and compile data and make those difficult decisions. So I appreciate your comment. Thank you. Trustee Burgess, do you have a question or two?
I do, and you might want to go around, but I wanted to know um through if I could. Because we don't really look reflect back on I'm going to say since the pandemic kind of ended, since we got back to uh in-class attendance, how accurate we are on predicting from the time of no registrations and the cat the budget is put together in the spring to the day in October or whatever it is when we count our full-time equivalent and in that, you know, the revenues get adjusted for full-time equivalency. What's our what's our rate of prediction?
Superintendent Armstrong?
About how much do we normally get over the last few years traditionally?
I'll make a general comment if I could through you, Madam Chair, and then maybe Mr. May you can give you a little bit more of the detailed numbers. I think the approach that we are taking, first of all, to do the enrollment projections to me is by far, it's conservative, but it's the right approach. And if you can only look at Thames Valley district school board that was far too aggressive and was looking at factors other than registrations that's got them into the kind of the conundrum that they're in right now. Um, because this is based on known enrollments, um, we would not expect obviously that number to go down unless somebody moved, and that wasn't planned. This number typically always goes up. Uh, Mr. May you can can probably chat about that briefly, or perhaps uh Superintendent Bryant might be able to comment on that. Um, but it should be noted, though, that the enrollment decline is quite a bit larger than what we've experienced in previous years. So whether we're going to get back to a at least flat enrollment, I can't tell you that right now.
Through you, Madam Chair, I can comment on our accuracy over the last few years at least. So last year, uh during the budget process, uh moving into the fall, when we revised the budget, we saw an overall increase of approximately two hundred and ninety two students. Going back a year before that, we saw an increase of approximately one hundred and twenty six students. Um, so there is a pickup of students throughout the the summer as there's late registrations. Um, but we tend to take the conservative approach when budgeting. Uh, we budget for what we know of about at the time, and we make adjustments when we're able to in the fall.
Superintendent Armstrong?
Right, and if I just might add, um, as if should enrollment increase, which is what we would all like to see, our core education funding would increase. But also, there's going to be an impact on the reduction of the declining enrollment grant, and there may or may not be an impact on staffing depending on where those students fit in in terms of which grades and whether you require additional staffing costs. So um, until we know that number and we're able to put that information in and 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 work those calculations out, um, there's some pluses and minuses to it. I just wanted to share.
And on that, I just wanted to confirm, didn't the also the ministry request that we do conservative approaches to enrollment numbers? It wasn't just our choice to do that. Thank you.
So supplemental, yeah, supplemental to make the thing. I don't want anybody to think that I'm assuming that the wrong approach was that. That wasn't my question. So um, the ministry asked us of it, and we've always been somewhat conservative. We go by data, and I appreciate that. My question was answered, thank you, uh by uh Mr. May who because I wanted to know how what our batting average was on predicting. And and it's a crystal ball. We don't know, but we do have facts from the last few years. So I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that even if our enrollment goes up, there's costs to those people showing up. So it's not it's not like a big bonus. There's there's some net, though. And I was just trying to figure out what our our trend was. So I appreciate that. I have another question, but I'll come away.
No, I'm going to go two at a time.
Okay, um, so in this last couple of years, there's been some pretty outstanding cyber incidents um across the province. And is there anything? Yes, there is. And I don't see where a contingency is or what kind of thing the provinces has done or anything, but they've been alarmingly large amounts and or scary. And I just don't see that. I see it listed under claim settlements and other events, et cetera, but but where's the rainy day fund should we be hit by something horrible?
Superintendent Armstrong?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Uh, there's there's no contingency. I'm going to be clear. There's no contingency in this budget. It is. It is tight, tight, tight. Um, that being said, um, the board has insurance for cyber incidences through OSB. And we get assessed every single year in terms of our our cybersecurity response and our IT plans that are in place. And there are different levels of coverage that boards are eligible to achieve. We get the highest level of coverage based on the the processes and the planning and the um security measures that we've put in place with the board. We also have access to a breach coach through through a law firm. So if that if there's any support or any incidences, should they occur, uh, we do have, you know, that available to us. And in addition to the insurance, quite frankly, we have accumulated surplus. There's literally no other contingencies in here. But we're quite comfortable with the fact that we do have the highest level of insurance through OSB, which is quite frankly really difficult now to get when you consider all of the cyber insurance issues and 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 challenges that are you're seeing across the globe.
Can I ask to be clear, is that something we chose or they assess us and they and they let us know that we qualify for that highest level because of what we've done?
Through you, Madam Chair, we apply for it.
It's it's also a topic under consideration by the Audit Committee for some future consideration as well. So, yeah, it is being uh considered. Thank you. Chief McCallie?
Thank you, Trustee Atfield. Um, thanks for the presentation. For a second time, it was great.
Thank you, trustee Atfield. Um, thanks for the presentation. For a second time, it was great. I do just have two quick questions. The first one, I'll apologize in advance if it's already been asked and answered. And I recognize I'm getting ahead of myself with this. But the draft budget financial summary has a reliance on $4 million one-time revenue for declining enrollment grant. My question is, was that taken into consideration when the board approved the multi-year financial recovery plan last year? And then how would that affect us next year? Like, I, I guess my question is, should we expect more? I don't want to say cuts, but you know, pressure to the budget.
Superintendent Armstrong?
Thank you for the very difficult question. Last year for 25, 26, 24, 25, I'll probably get my numbers mixed up. The board was relying on one-time revenue in part due to declining enrollment grant. And there was some revenue that was previously deferred. The ministry would allow you to defer it on the balance sheet. And then when you realized expenses, you'd release it to offset your expenses. The ministry made the board release that revenue. So we, I, I can't remember the number. Was it 3.9 of one-time revenue per, 3 million? 3 million of one-time revenue. This year, yes, we have declining enrollment of $4 million. And without it, we wouldn't be at 988,000 deficit. We would be at 4,988,000 deficit. Or the administration would have come back with additional adjustments to the budget in order to try and get us balanced. So could, will there be further reductions coming? I would say it's fairly certain, yes, we're going to have to do some more work.
Second question?
Yeah. Um, it's just a point of clarification, I guess, from the questions that we submitted in advance. So my sixth question was, given the persistent challenge of increasing staff absenteeism and associated replacement costs, how we explored innovative HR wellness initiatives implemented by other sectors or school boards to proactively address the root causes? And part of the response was HR participates in absence studies led by SPCI to review trends across school boards throughout Ontario and use, and use of data analytics to monitor trends and flag emerging concerns. Is senior administration able to speak to any potential emerging concerns like right now that they're aware of?
I'm going to ask the director for that.
So I'll start. Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, so we do have the attendance support program, which we're required to have. Disability management program as well. SPCI works with almost every single board in the province. So we have presentations from them. We see our board, although the data isn't great, we're actually better than some boards across the province. So that's a positive because the numbers could be worse in terms of our costs. And they identify for us, as well as for other boards that are part of the group, what they see as trends, what recommendations they would put into place. I can give one example off the top of my head, and Tim Lozon is going to be so excited that I give it around the ball strike program that we have in the elementary schools in terms of marking on the blacktop areas for ball strike. And that we've seen a reduction in lost time of work because of implementing that. I don't want to get into all the details of it, but that's one thing. So they've taken that, that our board has done, and they've shared that with other boards in terms of a very good practice. And then they bring back good practices to us. So we're always working together. At Senior Negotiators, which is a group of individuals of HR across the province for public boards, meet monthly, and there's always discussions about what are you doing? What are you doing? Do you have an incentive? You're trying all sorts of different things and willing to try and implement anything that's going to make a difference.
Trustee Chin, do you have a question?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Yeah, I have talked about it before, and my main concern is still the DEI funding on that. And because it's a deficit, there is no funding from the provincial level. And uh, why we still spend so much money on that? And uh, I think currently we are lack of a lot of fundings and we should trade off. And uh, we cut other programs, other, you know, teachers. And at the meantime, we keep all the counselors in DEI. I really don't think it's, it's reasonable. Because I, I'm not saying that DEI is not important because I'm a minority. But based on my common sense and logic, I think we should, you know, have trade off. And uh, if, if, for example, if we have no food to eat, and then why we spend so much money on other issues like other activities? And based on the situation of our board, I don't think we have so serious safety and discrimination issues which deserve us to spend so much money on DEI, DEI counselors. And I do think that uh, we should reconsider that and we don't just, you know, rely on the political initiated uh, kind of slogans. Uh, I'm, I, I think it's just, it's kind of a political political, you know, pressured that we spend such money. But even for the minorities, for the vulnerable case, they need more teachers to teach basic knowledge rather than have counselors to, you know, to do something else. I think we should know whichever is more important. And I know we have the strategy that's years ago. And based, I read those respondents from the, you know, consulting, consulting, oh, how to say that, consultants. Those respondents from, from community, large part of them mentioned the wasting money on DEI. And I, I do think we should take it seriously rather than just say, oh, that's important. I know it's important, but money is not so much. So we should reconsider. And also from the provincial level, provincial government do have a, a, you know, change in the law that uh, Bill 33 asks the, the boards to focus on basic knowledge teaching instead of focus on much more, more on the DEI activities.
Thank you, trustee Chin. So can we, and you have a question in there or is it just comment?
Yeah, my question is that could you really think about it? I, I don't need a, you know, answer that, oh, that's in my, in our priority and strategy. That, that's not, I'm not satisfied with that kind of answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Director?
So through you, Madam Chair, I'll start. And then anybody from the team who wants to add in. So a few things. I, I want to start off, it's not political at all. It's the right thing to do. And we're public education and you spoke about the basics of teaching. Safety is a precursor to learning. So unless students feel safe in their environment and accepted, they're not going to even learn the basics. So when they come to school, they need to feel safe. In terms of DEI and funding, we do receive some funding from the government. Specific areas would be our Black Graduation Coach, our Indigenous funding. Those are all equity based. And yes, we do make some decisions in our core education funding to use that towards equity. And you might note that there's a half a million dollars that we've reduced from what we've used last year. So we did hear your concerns. We have listened and we've reduced by a million dollars. So we're not continuing to increase. And we're working on a shoestring budget to address several, several priorities that we have in meeting the needs of our most marginalized and vulnerable students. And that's the work that we come to do every day. We do also have a dismantling anti-black racism strategy. It's not several years ago. We're actually only in year four of year five. And I'd welcome you to read the Ontario Human Rights Commission recent report on black students and the impact in education, as well as the right to read. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
Superintendent Armstrong?
Thank you through Madam Chair. I just, in addition to what Director Houston has, has said, I just want to point out that we have a $584 million budget. And that the funding that, or the money that's being spent on justice, inclusion, equity and diversity is 0.2 of 1% of that $584 million. So I think that that is a very small, small investment in something that is very, very important to our students.
Is it on this trustee McKinley? Just a minute. Um, trustee McKinley, on, okay, you want something clarified on the answer?
I'd just like to also remind everyone that last I remember, we were given statistics year over year that our city is third or fourth most diverse city in the country. So if our line in our budget is different than other school boards, it's most likely because our population is different than many other boards. Therefore, I've always been okay with whatever monies we need to, to help all of our students.
Trustee Chin, you have a second question on something different?
I have supplemental on this question. And uh, I mean, uh, most of the deficit funding that we put, we don't have any funding from the provincial level. And I want to clarify that.
Oh, no, sorry. Your question is about DEI funding?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we do have funding.
Yeah, it, I, I, I don't agree with that answer because it said, uh, actually, most of the money we spend on that is not funded by the government. And uh,
We've already gone through that. Can we have your second question, please? Your second question?
My, my second question is that uh,
On something different?
Yeah, I, I read all the, you know, there is all the, you know, answers from the survey. Nobody mentioned, nearly nobody mentioned the safety issue in the, in the board. And I, I am questioning why we had so many counselors to handle with something that, that's not really existed here. And uh, and uh, many, many people mentioned wasting money on this aspect. Actually, it relates to the decrease of our enrollment. Is that enroll, yes, is that enrollment? Because they are not satisfied with the teaching quality here. Because we are not focusing on increasing the quality education and we put so much energy on the DEI issues. That's, that's not what we want. So it's not only this small part of money as a superintendent mentioned. It's not small. It, it has, you know, bad effect because it's, it needs energy and time for the school to do that. And it obviously, you know, affect you focused on the basic knowledge teaching and the quality. And the enrollment, the, the parents, the students prove that. So why shouldn't we, you know, really find the reason? What, what makes such situation happen? And uh, please, I am not blaming, but I want you to think more reasonably.
Trustee Chin, I don't think you're being fully respectful. I had requested that of you earlier, but I want to know. I want your second question. Clearly tell me if you have a question.
My, yeah, my question is that I can I get a better answer instead of just, uh, this is a small part. And this is in our strategy. I want more clearer question because I'm asking for the parents, for the community. They asked here. And I hope it can get attention. Thank you.
We answered your question at the committee.
I'm not satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nelson.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation and all of the work that's gone into the budget. I, I feel a great sense of concern as well. From our repairs to our supply and absences to the needs, the complex needs of our, our youth with special needs. Earlier you had mentioned something regarding a third party to review expenses, and that was part of the board administrative expense limit. And it was focused on accountability. I kind of didn't understand that portion. If you don't mind sharing a little bit more about that piece. Thank you.
Superintendent Armstrong?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. One of the new transparency measures that the Ministry of Education is implementing effective with 25, 26 is they're looking at school boards administrative expenses. There are limits within the education funding formula on how much a board can spend adminis, for administrative related items. Our board isn't near that limit at all. But there are other school boards across the province that exceed that limit. So what the ministry has put in place is for the first year that you exceed that limit, you are required to have a compliance plan that's put in place and you need to post that on your board's website. And you have to put progress reports in terms of how you are addressing the increases in your administrative expenses relative to the limit. If in the next year, you again exceed the administrative expense limit calculation, what the ministry is now doing is they're requiring that a school board hire at their own expense, a third party. It could be an accounting firm, it could be a law firm, forensic investigator, whatever the board chooses to come in and effectively audit their administrative expenses and potentially, I'm going to assume, look for opportunities to reduce those administrative expenses. In the third year, if you again exceed the administrative expense limit calculation by the funding formula, then the ministry is going to come in and they're going to make those changes for you. So I think we don't have more details beyond what I've told you. So, you know, we're waiting for further clarification. For purposes of our board, our administrative expense limit is we're well below that. We're not close to even meeting that.
Can you have a second question?
I just wanted to say that I respect that we're not near the limit. And I wish that that meant more money for other areas in our board. But thank you very much for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Trustee McKinley?
Okay, so this question just came up while I, while I'm listening. And you, I heard you say that they would be looking at boards whose amount exceed that for the governance administration section. What about like our board that is much below it? Our SOs have been frozen since 2018 and before that they have been frozen from 2012. Does the ministry look at how much lower ours are? And perhaps recognize that since they just recently gave themselves a 35% increase in their pay? Just wondering.
Superintendent Armstrong?
Thank you. Um, through you, Madam Chair. If you actually turn to the seventh tab seven, you're going to see the compliance for the school board administration. And you'll see that the board actually has an expense limit of 20, 20.6 million dollars. Our budget is only 13.8 million dollars. So we actually are underspent by 6.7 million dollars. I would love to come over there and hug you for what you just said because I can't even tell you how much it means. I'm going to get emotional. How much it means to us to hear that comment. But as a board, we choose when we underspend here, then that money is used to help support special education, student transportation and all those other areas where we don't, we don't have enough funding.
Second question? Okay. Yep. Yes, yes. If it seems like we're not asking many questions, it's because there was many asked in advance. Trustee Leclerc, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, so let me start by saying thank you to Superintendent Armstrong and her team for all the fantastic work that you guys have done in putting this together. It's, it's a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time. And I've been involved with the finance committee for many years now. And I know the great work you do. You know, including the work of Mr. Mayhew. But I don't want to, I don't want to miss anybody because I know everybody that's sitting out in the gallery right now all contribute to the work that's done. But thank you for that work. And without getting into, um, you know, the superintendent renumeration issue that trustee McKinley brought up, rest assured wholeheartedly that I think what's happened with that is so inappropriate. so inappropriate, and I'd like to see that changed, but I'm just not sure how we get there. And this whole, whole issue of management oversight, it's a red herring, right? It's, it's really about, it's an easy target to say, oh, let's go after administration. We hear it all the time. Anyway, so now I'll get to my question. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Armstrong, we have student transportation, funding deficit, the province dictates through regulation who's entitled to transportation. We have an absenteeism deficit, and the province is responsible for determining those absentee entitlements at the provincial level. We have unfunded federal regulatory requirements, EI contributions, and CPP contributions, that are simply just ignored at the provincial level. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if those were all adequately funded, meaning we've got them to zero, we would not be in a deficit situation. We'd be far from it, correct?
You, Madam Chair, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So what we have is not a spending problem in our board, or any other board across the province, for that matter. What we have is an inadequate funding model that leaves our board and every other board across the province at risk for decisions that are made at tables that we don't even have a seat at. So good work for you guys to get us to less than a million dollars, but we should be in a huge surplus, in my opinion. So thank you for that.
You have a second question?
No.
No, thank you. Trustee Leclerc? I, I did send in some questions, and I asked a number of questions at the Finance Committee meeting as well. So I would echo Trustee McKinley and Trustee Leclerc as well. I know how much that has impacted our senior team, the remuneration question, for which, you know, our hands are tied, I guess, unless you can find us a way to untie them. And I'm sure we would jump on board if we could untie them. And with regard to the level of funding in the areas that Trustee Leclerc mentioned, we're like a broken record on that one, and they're not, they're just not listening. And it's not our board, it's, it's a provincial issue, and we're just not having any success with that. Having said that, I think it's important to recognize that we've done the best we can with the funding that we're given, and that's our job. We don't have the legal ability to change those funding levels, and we're required to create a budget within those levels. I, I feel very confident that the decisions that were made to put this budget package together were done with great thoughtfulness, great mindfulness, as to the needs of our students, bottom line, the needs of our students. And we, we care about all our students, every one of them. We want them to have exceptional learning experiences in our schools and in our classrooms. And I think that the challenge is, is to meet those funding challenges the best way we can, and I think that's what happened with the budget that we've been presented. So I, again, just want to say thank you very much for the work that's gone into this. I'm not going to say that it was easy to make some of these decisions. Last year's well was very challenging, and to find ourselves in this multi-year deficit reduction situation is unfortunate, but I, I am amazed at the job that the team has done in bringing us in at the rate that they did this year in the proposed budget. So I've had my questions answered, thank you very much. If, if I have more questions, I won't hesitate to ask at another time, and I would say the same to trustees, that if there are additional questions, you can still ask, and I will just go around again to see if there are any further questions. Trustee Burgess?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And eventually, I would like to maybe all of us speak about the letter we will send, because we always send letters if this passes, because there are some points, I think. Right. So, so eventually, I'm just giving a heads up, because I've made some notes on that too. But I have questions just of clarification. I don't know what a BAS upgrade is, and I have a question about elimination of LDSS IB. So first, first thing first, what's a BAS upgrade?
Through you, Madam Chair, building automation systems.
You did say it the whole thing, and I just didn't put it together. So the other question was about elimination of LDSS IB. My understanding was that it was still going on for next year, for 2526, the part that was granted, so it was like the last phase of it, and yet Riverside is in the budget as saying, you know, the phase out, but elimination of LD. And I was wondering, do I have it wrong? Because I thought there was still going to be IB things next year for some, the last vestigial bit.
Someone clarify that? The director?
Through you, Madam Chair. At Leamington next year, just the, the current grade elevens will be able to finish their grade 12 program. So we have just a few students who will be finishing IB at LDSS next year, whereas at Riverside, the current students who are in grade nine, and 10, and 11 are going to be able to continue. So it's being phased out, so we are, we're not adding any new students in as of next year, but the program at Riverside was quite a lot larger than LDSS, and so we made a decision to phase it out over a few years.
So to that end, could we have that word elimination changed to phase out, because it's only one more year? But I think it's a little alarming if anybody actually does, from the community, see that it's eliminated, because in 2526, it does actually still, we still are funding it to some extent.
We'd be happy to make that change.
Anything else, Trustee Burgess?
Well, CDA positions? I just don't know what CDA positions.
It's a communicated disorders assistance. Yep.
Again, thank you for the presentation and for answering all your questions. Oh, sorry. Chin, you have another question?
Yes, thank you. On page 20, mentioned Indigenous education, and I know it's envelope funding, and it's, the total funding is $2,211,800. Those fundings, I wonder how many Indigenous students do we have, and why we spend so much money on this? Thank you.
I think that question is very disrespectful to our, to our board.
Oh, why, why is disrespectful? I am offended by your remarks.
Oh, sorry about that. Because our Canadian culture embraces our Indigenous population as-
Yes, yes, I'm just asking how many students-
Point of order, Madam Chair. Our Indigenous students and families self-identify.
Yes, they do.
And do not have to prove-
Correct.
-beyond their self-identity in their own way that is acceptable to everybody across the country in a administrative thing, where they have to figure out budgeting, or revenue, or anything. They don't have to answer to any question like that, and it is out of order.
Correct.
It's questioning somebody's identity.
It's not particularly asking anybody's identity, I'm just asking the overall-
You just asked.
Since you have budget, you should have the number, estimated number, right?
Sorry. We, sorry.
It's not respectful, trust me, and I'm minority. I'm just curious why we spend so much money on that? Just a question.
Madam Chair, this question's out of order. Why do we spend money on self-identified Indigenous students and/or families, for that matter? Because it's required.
Not true, the purpose of the question to the budget, so I'm going to ask you to move on. Do you have another area of a question?
Just a supplemental, on this same page, the form above that, it clearly shows that the DEI funding, $776,000 is not unfunded, it's deficit. I'm just for clarification. Thank you.
I'm, we've reached the end of the agenda. I am going to declare the committee meeting adjourned, and we'll have a break until 6:00, when we have our public meeting. Thank you.